Buckingham County Board of Supervisors, the meeting is called to order. Time to have seven or seven. Brothers, will you give us an invocation, federal leaders? Time, please.
Shall we pray, please? Gracious eternal God, we come right now with thankful and grateful hearts. We come thankful for your many blessings. We come to ask you blessed upon this meeting. We pray that things be done according to thy will. Praying we bless our nation, bless our leaders, bless our county in a special way. In your praise, name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
All citizens, I want me to leave the flag of our country.
Let me lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion for approval of agenda.
I'd move, Mr. Chairman, that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Approval of minutes? Motion on that?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Approval of minutes? Any discussion? All for the vote. To make a motion, you need to hit your button over. There you go. Don't matter, I changed. Sorry. I'm sorry. I won't think. All right. Motion carried. Approval of claims?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Black? Who's this button that don't do nothing? That's why I've done something. Ain't no way to stand on it. Motion carried. Any announcements? Announcements? Of the comments?
Yes, we have six signed up. We have eight voicemails and I think 11 emails. First up is Joyce Gooden, District Six.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joyce Gooden. I live on Shelton Store Road in District Six. Joe Chambers is my Board of Supervisors representative. My comments have to do with the 2020 electoral processes here in Buckingham County. My polling site is the Masonic Hall. I worked the dual primary in June. I volunteered to help prepare the absentee ballots for mailing. I worked the early voting at the central office. And I was the Slate Rivers Assistant Chief for the 3rd of November. I tell you of my background so that you will understand I know firsthand of what I speak. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the person or persons who hired Lindsey Taylor as the Registrar and Director of Elections. I applaud Lindsey's dedication, her energy, her election protocol knowledge, equipment knowledge, and ability to get the job done. Let me not forget to mention Lindsey's patience. Lindsey's patience with me and my many questions foremost, but also her patience with the questions and the scheduling of all the people needed for early voting and all 11 voting precincts. A huge thank you goes to Lindsey's team of the Buckingham County Electoral Board, Rick Caldwell, Chairman, Gail Braxton, Vice Chair, Larry Davis, Secretary. Thank you to all of the central office support. Thank you to Margaret Thomas and all of the poll workers who supported our electoral processes here in Buckingham. As a final note, I urge the Board of Supervisors to expedite the upgrade of the cellphone and internet service here in Buckingham County. You were able to support the school system in their quest to provide buses with hotspots to support student educational needs. We truly needed better service at the Masonic Hall. At one point, three of us were on our cellphones trying to find the sweet spot in the room to get a call to the Registrar's office. We were all going to ask the same question. By the way, the signal sweet spot was never twice in the same spot. It would be wonderful if Buckingham's precincts could use laptops instead of paper poll books. That would translate into quicker voter verification and less calls to the central office. Again, thank you for allowing me to express myself at this meeting.
Thank you.
Next is Marie Flowers, District Three. Julie Quillan will be next.
Marie Flowers, the third district. And I'm coming because of the gold mining. My interpretation of the responsibility of government is to promote an orderly society and protect people. For example, roads, speed limits, et cetera. You know, we have guidelines so that things go smoothly and people are safe. We need to protect the health of the people. Now, this board, except for the two people who were not on the board that previously, in my opinion, did not do their utmost to protect the people of Union Hill from the consequences of the compressor. Obviously, there are people in this county who do not matter. This board, the Planning Commission, they wouldn't demand an electric generator. They wouldn't demand closer turn-off valves. There were a number of things that this board and the Planning Commission could have done to protect the people. But you all went along with whatever Dominion wanted. And I just feel like you don't care about people. You only care about what you want. You have another opportunity to shortchange these same people with the gold mine and with the poison that mining generates. Try to remember, they're people. They're more important than money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Quillan, District Five. David Ball will be next.
Good evening. My name is Julie Quillan and I grew up on a Warminster Church Road. I currently reside with my father, David Quillan, at 4484 Warminster Church Road in the James River District. I live on the land and property that I will inherit. And this is the land that I hold dear. And this is where I hope to raise my future children. Since I was a young child, my brother and I spent our summers roaming the woods and playing in Branch Creek behind our house. We built forts from tree branches, covered ourselves in mud, and dammed up sections of the creek to make swimming pools. There's a certain type of happiness, health, and well-being that comes from a childhood of loving the land that you live on. I hope that all of you listening today have a sense of what that feels like. Also, there's a certain type of pride in adulthood that comes from believing that your county officials will do the right thing to preserve the land that you love as well as to maintain the health and well-being of the citizens who live on it. As I stand here this evening, I question whether I have that sense of pride or not. Hello? Okay. I do not support... I do not support a zoning text amendment that would allow core sampling for commercial purposes with a special use permit. Aston Bay Holdings has been illegally conducting core sampling in this county for four years. I understand that we are here this evening to talk about core sampling. And yet, core sampling is the obvious precursor to gold mining. A zoning text amendment is simply a slap on the wrist and opens the door for a potential open pit gold mine. This would pollute our air and discharge toxic chemicals into our streams and groundwater. This would wreak havoc on our health and on the land that we hold so dear. Open pit gold mining could irreparably damage Northwestern Buckingham. Rather than a zoning text amendment, I urge you to make changes in the zoning laws to prohibit mining and related activities in A1 and to issue a fine against Aston Bay Holdings for their violation of our zoning ordinance. Imagine that this is happening in your backyard. Imagine it's your children or grandchildren who want to roam through the woods and play in the creek. Imagine it's your well water and your family and your neighbors' health and well-being at stake. Like you, I love Buckingham County and I want to preserve it for future generations. I want a healthy childhood for my children, just as I had as a child. No amount of money gained from this project is worth the cost of our health, our community, and our future. Thank you.
David Ball, District Three. Quinn Robinson will be next.
Good evening. David Ball, District Three. I see that you're looking at some policy changes with regards to what's happened with this pandemic. And I can tell you that this pandemic is going to be over pretty quickly now that we have a pharmaceutical company that has successfully proven that they have 90% capacity in their results to cure this virus or to immune people against it. So I expect that this event is going to end very quickly. It's always good to have a backup policy for future events. And you can't always forecast what those events are going to be. But bear in mind that the county here, except for the prison system, has fared fairly well as opposed to the more populated areas. And the other side of that is the fact that there are a lot of small businesses here that actually suffered or were put out of business because of this COVID thing. There was no provision, there was no ability for those companies or businesses to adjust. And so they shut down. And even major corporations. I mean, you can see major corporations like AC Moore. They just decided, hey, it's a tough market, we're just closing down altogether. So there's been a lot of effect on not just the county, but the state and the country as far as what's happened with this pandemic virus. And so we need to plan for the future and know that in the present day and what's going on, that there are cures out there. That we have fantastic pharmaceutical companies that have worked on this aggressively and come up with cures. And those will be available shortly to the general public. So I think that's something that we can all be comforted by and look forward to a more prosperous future. Thank you.
Quinn Robinson, District Four. And Paul Barlow will be next.
Good evening, gentlemen, fellow citizens. My name is Quinn Robinson. I live out in Andersonville. Can't give you the address right now because V-Dot ran over the sign or the box. But it can be reached, PO Box 888 in Dillon. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I had extreme difficulty accessing the website in order to get information about this meeting. It's just, it's probably something that CenturyLink is doing or neglected to do. And I think it merits some consideration for investigating, if not an audit, of what is happening with the website and how to improve it. There's a lot of dead ends with old information that should have been purged a long time ago. And I couldn't get the agenda to load because it was over 300 and some pages, according to my printer. Not that I was going to print them, but I wanted to navigate it. And that's another problem. But anyway, my concerns tonight are the nature of these meetings and how they're run. And I think we can do better. And I think this apparatus of... Now, people are... This is being filmed and people are looking at the backs of people's heads. It's a little bit awkward. And there are other ways of doing it. And I've shared something with Supervisor Miles that possibly could correct this. And it's an inexpensive option in terms of cameras that record livestream and can be controlled by the county and not by YouTube. The other thing is about the gold mining. I'm opposed to it. And I'd like to repeat what I said at the Planning Commission. First thing is that we did... There was an episode back in the 70s and 80s when the Love Dump was created and became a disaster. It's now our superfund site. We don't want to repeat that. Time and again, we hear people say that they appreciate the rural nature of the county, farming, forestry, and friendship, whatever, but not heavy industry. There are very little necessary provisions for heavy industry or anything like this gold mine. But the point is, you didn't get it right that time. And then along came Dominion with the pipeline. The same thing we said, we like it the way it is, in a casual, comfortable setting where people can live in peace. But that didn't happen. He spent that part of six years funding for the pipeline. It was wrong. And now we're going to be having potential gold mining? And you're going to throw at all the ordinances and fix them so the South Bay can work here? It's wrong. Just look at the poisons that are used to extract the gold from the ore. Thank you.
Thank you. Alphabett.
Paul Barlow, District Five.
Good evening. Paul... Whoa. Paul Barlow, District Five. I live off of Pond Road, two miles from the core drilling site. So it looks like we're all going to get crash courses here soon in gold mining. I've learned quite a bit in the last few weeks. But first and foremost, before pursuing a zoning text amendment to allow core drilling for A1 zones, we should consult with some experts to figure out why all of a sudden we have a cluster of wells going dry in the area surrounding the core drilling site. Somehow, it seems the hydrology of the area has been affected by this. And if Aston Bay activity is to blame, then they should be held accountable. We all know that core drilling is a gateway to open pit mining. It will be an open pit because of the gold is near the surface. And that's just going to cause an environmental disaster for generations to come. And also, everyone here should be angry, or at least miffed, that a company snuck in here and started drilling holes into the local aquifer without any permission or supervision. You know, I mean, you know, we need to get some ire up about that. So I say, let's just take a timeout and consult with some experts. And if the zoning ordinance is to be amended, amend it so that core drilling and mining is prohibited in A1 zones. Thank you.
Hey, we have eight voicemails. The first one is from Alan Binstock.
Greetings. I'm Alan Binstock. I'm a master planner with 20 years, two years' experience at NASA Goddard Space Flight Center. And I'm currently working on a draft master plan for the Yogaville community and area. I just wanted to let you folks know that we're looking at 20 years, which will focus in on village growth, economic growth, and particularly development of businesses and perhaps light industry. That's all ahead of us coming up. And our community expects to expand and grow. And as we've done in the past, we will continue to employ people. The Ashram will, community will employ people who are from the community. And this is important to us. And of course, as you probably guessed, it's critical that our area remain healthy and helpful to live in. I'm very concerned, as we go forward to do this, about the outfall and side effects of the potential gold mining. And I will, at future meetings, show up in person. I couldn't come for this meeting coming up. So I wanted to go on record for you. I am at 434... Excuse me, 301-395-6080, if you have any questions. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
The next one is from Cassandra Stish.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Supervisors and members of the Planning Commission. This is Cassandra Stish, 3098 Sycamore Creek Road, Buckingham, Virginia, 23921. I live in the 5th District. I have spoken to some of you directly. And thank you for taking time to listen to my concerns and for telling me about your upcoming work session where you're expecting to learn more about the industrial drilling and mineral prospecting occurring approximately two miles from my home. I'm glad to hear that more information is coming from some experts to help everyone understand what is before us. Even so, please be sure you are getting information from all angles, not merely from permitting agencies who explain how they regulate this activity, not the impact of it per se. And I implore you to get more information or more experts if our current concerns aren't addressed. It would be helpful to present all of the information provided during the work session to the public in a format a little more useful than the meeting minutes. Please be proactive on behalf of the citizens and make sure we have access to and can easily share information provided to our leaders. It's a travesty this activity went on for so long unnoticed. And I hope that our county attorney is exploring if injunctive relief is called for in the case of the citizens who have already experienced detrimental effects on their wells. This is only the camel's nose in the tent. Please do everything you can to keep it from progressing further. Do not permit the ZTA to move forward. Deny Aston Bay's request for a ZTA and therefore, the inevitable subsequent special use requests that will follow to permit industrial mining and significant zoning map amendment. The industrial mining activity that is being marketed as an investment opportunity as a result of this illegal industrial drilling conducted by Aston Bay does not belong in the A1 district. Warehouse doesn't live here, we do. Aston Bay doesn't live here, we do. Their kids don't drink the water, ours do. It is the job of the comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance to protect Buckingham and to shepherd a clean, bright future for all of us. It's the job of the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission to make sure we don't get screwed over. We're counting on you for do your jobs for all our sakes. Thank you very much. I look forward to talking to you about this more in the future. Have a lovely evening.
Chad Obah.
My name is Chad Obah and I am in District Number Six. Good evening. It's my understanding that what is being considered here tonight is an advisory to the Planning Commission on what you want to do about a Canadian company that has been doing drilling on an A1 zoned land for four years. This is an activity that is prohibited by our Buckingham zoning ordinance. First of all, I say do a legal notification to cease this activity, which I understand you've already done, and then fine them to the maximum amount. 23 holes times whatever should be a good amount. And I'm surprised that they haven't been fined already. I don't believe that drilling 23 exploratory holes with questions about how much water has already been used and certainly where it was dispersed to afterwards can lead to anything other than full-out open pit gold mining. So even considering a zoning text amendment will ensure that it will be taken to the next step. I say stop it now and keep this A1 zone integrity intact for what it was intended to be is clearly spelled out in your own zoning ordinance. I've been practicing mental health here in Buckingham and surrounding counties for 25 years. And what that means is that I listen to people's stories, where they're working and where they aren't. Sometimes I'm able to help them reframe them and make a new story that works better. I think that this story of moving Buckingham towards open pit mining would not have a good ending. There are people who you will hear from that are already bearing the impact through water loss of this risky tra... Risky, excuse me, trajectory. Who is paying for their new wells? Is Aston Bay? We could well end up with another superfund Love Dump. I'm asking you to protect the good people here, many of whom have contributed positively to Buckingham, teaching your children, developing their land for agricultural use, paying their taxes, and living on the land for what it was intended for. Why have a zoning plan if you don't follow it? We need... We need a new story that protects the people, the land, our water tables, our wildlife. Please do not create another sacrifice zone with little regard for the impacts it would have and have had already. I further support having a citizens advisory board that can offer some real information and what open pit gold mining leads to. Although there were good people that work in our state agencies, they are limited in what they can say. Further research needs to be done. I say delay this process, do the research, do not pass a zoning text amendment. Thank you very much.
Heidi Bear Two.
Hi, my name is Heidi Divya Bear Two. I'm in the James River District, and these comments are for the public comments for the Board of Supervisors tonight, November 10th, 2020. Thank you for making this available. Aston Bay drillers were informed in June that their drilling is prohibited by county law, and that's after four years of exploratory drilling without the county's knowledge or permission. So please do not reward very bad behavior by making it easier for them by creating a ZTA that would permit core sample drilling. We heard you deny in an earlier meeting that exploratory drilling for gold, that exploratory drilling for gold leads to gold mining, but that's exactly what it's for. I'm very concerned that your need to watch over a healthy economy in Buckingham is being clouded by thinking that gold mining would bring money to the county. Unfortunately, gold mining has a clearly proven, very bad business history that would cost the county and the state dearly for generations to come. I ask you to please slow down and do the research that is readily available. Friends of Buckingham has been compiling information on the website, and if you just put "gold mining" in the search, all those posted articles will come up. What penalties will be leveled? I see that it is not just our right, but also our duty to demand that you penalize this company. That's an income resource. You have guidance for this in zoning codes. What oversight would be conducted on the 23 holes that were drilled? Who will do that? A non-toxic water well requires oversight. A GW2 form is filed for each well dug, listing things like the day the drilling started, when it finished, the depth, flow, size of the hole, how it was closed, and so what else is needed for the gold drilling sites? I formally ask you to make zoning changes to remove the allowable activity of mining and quarering in the A1 zone, as it is contrary to the purpose stated for this zone. And I sent in an email with, that has excerpts from both the A1 zone and the industrial zone. So the industrial zone is in alignment with these purposes. Industry would have to apply to change the zone from A1 to M2 to do their very dirty impactful work, but the county would then be, you know, in keeping with the zoning master plan. And environmental impact studies should be required. Other allowable, way less impactful activities require close scrutiny and updated review. I ask you to create a citizen advisory council so that the growing number of very alarmed residents can have a reasonable conversation with you. These public comment periods fall short of what is needed to address this very serious situation. There's already been a lot of unnecessary confusion. Please see us as your best resources and not the enemy. Let's work together. To be clear, I am opposed to open pit gold mining, as there is substantial and justifiable fear of gold mining doing irreparable harm to our county, state, and beyond. Let us not create more sacrifice zones in this county that only benefit the mining companies and leave us with external, of living with toxic soil, water, air, water tables drastically drawn down, healthcare burdens, expensive road repairs. Cleanup is not really possible. We live with the mess we allow for centuries to come. Let's be open for clean business.
Joseph Abate.
Hello, this is Jiva Abate, representing Yogaville from District Five. I'm addressing the issue of gold mining and core drilling in Buckingham County. Dear County Supervisors, thank you for your service. Yogaville and many of our community members, staff, and leadership are now informed of the planned gold mining operations in the county by Canadian mining company Aston Bay Holdings. The history of toxic gold mining operations is well-established, with huge costs of cleanup, pollution mitigations, and legal action. Open pit, deep pit, and other types of gold mining produce waste containing dangerous chemicals, including mercury, arsenic, cyanide, lead, petroleum byproducts, and acids. Mining, mineral processing, and metallurgical extractions produce large quantities of waste into the environment and waste metals leaching out in contaminated water called acid mine drainage, which threatens groundwater, our well water, our farms, and livestock. While Aston Bay and their representatives claim that they don't use poisonous toxins but biodegradable products and little water, the clear science on this matter disputes that claim. A paper on heavy metal pollution from gold mines and the bacterial strategies for resistance from the National Institutes of Health hold that there is no clean approach in using any kind of biodegradable products. All gold mining is dirty. While the request for a zoning text amendment by Aston Bay is being framed as just providing for a zoning change to allow an entity to apply for a permit for core sampling, the whole basis of this is to open up gold mining in Buckingham. The A1 agricultural zoning is currently in place in our region to protect us from such a toxic operation. In fact, to quote the Comprehensive Plan, "This district is established for the purpose of preserving and promoting rural land uses. It's supposed to be facilitating existing and future farm operations found in Buckingham County, preserving farm and forest lands, conserving water, reducing soil erosion, preventing water pollution, protecting watersheds, and reducing hazards from flood and fire." Finally, "An independent environmental impact study conducted on the potential impact of this operation on the health and safety of Buckingham communities and property should be conducted before opening the doors of such an operation." Yogaville and our many community members urge each of you, as a county representative, to vote no on any change to the zoning text amendment or the zoning text at all that would open the door for gold mining to our beautiful Buckingham County. Thank you for your continued service. Respectfully submitted, Jiva Abate. Thank you.
Catherine Tymnakis.
For tonight's Board of Supervisors meeting, this is Catherine Tymnakis, Coordinator for Concerned Citizens for Animal Protection. I am speaking out from the Glenmore District, appealing to everyone in charge to not make any amendments to the zoning texts, which continues, enforces prohibited activity. This gold mine project is only for profit, literally gold digging, and will destroy the ecosystem, the most precious of all our resources. Thank you.
Kenda Hanaman.
This is Kenda Hanaman in District Five, and I'm speaking to the ZTA that proposed exploratory zoning text amendment. Thank you for hearing what Buckingham residents are discovering about this topic. Several of you have stated that the text amendment is simply about exploratory drilling. Does anyone here really think that drilling isn't the precursor to mining? Your constituents have uncovered information regarding the Aston Bay Holdings Buckingham project. This is what this Canadian company is telling their investors in their Aston Bay corporate presentation of September 2020. I quote, "The Hale Mine is a great play and one we'd like to replicate in Virginia." This is at about the 12-minute point in their recording for investors on the Aston Bay website. "Not only is the drilling finding gold, but other minerals, copper, lead, zinc, cobalt, referred to as polymetallic substances. Consider where this is heading. Our water is in peril should this mining be allowed. I quote, 'Acid drainage and cyanide are among the major environmental threats from gold mines across the country, contaminating groundwater and rivers in some places.'" This was in the June 30th of 2019 WFAE report called Mining Company Wants to Expand Operations at the Historic South Carolina Gold Mine. Leave this ordinance as it is, thus continuing to prohibit exploratory drilling. Again, please leave the ordinance as it is, continuing to prohibit exploratory drilling. This was the decision you made regarding the noise ordinance. This is the choice I ask you to make for the good of Buckingham's residents, environment, and our children's and grandchildren's future. Thank you.
Swami Dayananda.
Good evening. My name is Swami Dayananda, living on Warminster Church Road, District Number Five. I want to begin for tonight's November 10th Board of Supervisors meeting, a public comment. Firstly, thank you to Planning Commissioners for discussing the possibilities of inviting experts on the matter of gold mining, before making any recommendations on zoning text amendment. I am very glad that Board of Supervisors will be considering the topic this evening. The gold mining projects, which can have such great impact on our water, land, our health, and environment, and for some of us, possibilities of losing our homes. Gardens and farms require taking time to study and get all the facts on what it means to the residents nearby the sites and for the entire county. As a part of the study, I asked the Board to consider Citizens Advisory Council. When the citizens and the county administrators work together with frequent communication and sharing of information, I believe we can go through the process of considering gold mining projects in our county with more civility and with mutual respect and common goal for the better of the county. We all want best for Buckingham County's residents, farms, businesses, their family, our health, and our well-being. I look forward to the experts' presentation and also for Board of Supervisors to please consider creating Citizens Advisory Board. Thank you so very much for your service.
And now Nikki will read you the emails.
The first email states, "My name is Brian Lucy. My wife and I own a home in 43 acres at 2878 Warminster Church Road in District Five. Our property is about a mile from current core sampling activity. The facts, as I see it, are Aston Bay violated Page One of its own Code of Conduct, Aston Bay violated the county zoning ordinance, Aston Bay failed to exercise even a minimum of due diligence before drilling for core samples, and then continued to illegally drill core samples for four years without so much as making a simple phone call to the zoning office during that entire time. Instead of communicating with the county government, they prefer to talk only with investors and shareholders. They touted their prospecting funds and celebrated what they claimed to be a permissive legal jurisdiction. This does not bode well for future operations. I can only surmise from this that they are either malevolent, incompetent, or lazy. Any one of those three will spell disaster." In Montana, another Canadian gold company, Pegasus Gold, stuck taxpayers there with a $100 million, with a $100 million cleanup bill after they went bankrupt in the late 90s. The company's cleanup bond was insufficient to repair the damage it caused. It's now one of several gold mines that are EPA superfund sites. A 2013 earthwork study of 93% of all gold-producing mines in the U.S. found that every single site had at least one pipeline spill, and three-quarters of them harmed ground or surface waters adjacent to their operations. Core sampling and mining activities are in direct conflict with the intent and scope of A1 zoning, as is expressly stated in county code. Deviation from that intent will open the door, not to business opportunity, but to countless burdens heaped on taxpayers. At the October 26th meeting of the Planning Commission, the chairman told us that the 50- to 100-age demographic in our community could not afford tax increases caused by a lack of business tax revenue. This community is telling you what we cannot afford. We cannot afford to drink poisoned water. We cannot afford to have water delivered when our wells dry up beneath us. We cannot afford to breathe polluted air. We cannot afford to sell our homes at a loss when the value plummets. We cannot afford to lose our wildlife. We cannot afford to be stuck with a cleanup bill once gold profits dry up and the mine operators disappear in a cloud of lawyers. Allowing this activity to go forwards here or elsewhere in A1-zoned areas of the county will not bring long-term sustainable revenue, jobs, and opportunity. It will bring some short-term gains for a few people, followed by decades of expense for everyone. Do not amend the zoning ordinance to allow for core sampling in A1 zones." Our next comment states, "Gold drilling in Buckingham fueled public comment. Lakshmi Fyodor, District Five. I ask the Board of Supervisors not only to deny a zoning text amendment to the list of special use permits in an A1 agricultural district to allow core sampling for commercial use, but that you also issue hefty fines to Blue Ridge property owners for each 28-plus exploratory core drilling sites, which defied our local ordinances and likely caused nearby wells that share this aquifer to go dry. There is no economic justification imaginable to instead reward that illegality by overturning our farmland protections ordinance to endanger our 100% single source of water, which is illegal under the U.S. Clean Water Act, for the sole benefit of a Canadian gold mining operation. Because of the mining operation's location and immense environmental and environmental justice impacts, the Board of Supervisors must instead stop this permit process to involve federal and state agencies and required pre-screening reviews for the site suitability of this project. Your special use permit for the Union Hill compressor Station was considered not relevant by the U.S. Appeals Court for the Fourth District when vacating the ACP air permit. Why? Because Dominion had supplied you, FERC, and DEQ with the same poor, incomplete, and deliberately omitted data that led to our lawsuit and its favorable outcome. The judges require DEQ's and Dominion's lawyer to place in the record that Union Hill is an environmental justice community, to accept the door-to-door household findings of 84% majority-minority from the community household study I designed and led. The other one half of the basis for the judge's unanimous decision was the proposed fine particulate matter emissions from gas-fired turbines, which this mining operation will also cause. The Department of Transportation, DOT, requires environmental justice reviews and reviews of particulate matter and new infrastructure that will use public roads as part of their operations. Thus, the Board must not, for gold mining, as for fracked gas prior, only consult with and accept as factual corporate-provided gold mining environmental science data, which, like the coal industry hides their mining operation's health and morality hazards, or tobacco and the opioid industries hiding addiction and health impacts by manipulating data. The billions in fines now for doing so do not bring back the dead. Instead, the Board must consult open-pit mining environmental scientists who are independent of industry ties, whose methods and findings stand up as replicable by other independent scientists. A National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, guidelines-based environmental justice review will find the same EJ findings and air emissions with this site for open-pit mining activities. And the site must be reviewed under the Historic Preservation Act, Section 106, that brings the Federal Advisory Council of Historic Preservation, ACHP, into consult, because both Yogaville and Union Hill rural historic district are under Virginia Department of Historic Resources Review processes. A new gold rush in Buckingham will this time leave permanent scars and contaminations with its toxic cocktail of chemicals, degradation that heightens sickness and mortality. We will bring these issues before the courts, too, because preventing health conditions and deaths from gold mining and all forms of toxic polluting air, water, and soil -- and deaths from gold mining and all forms of toxic polluting air, water, and soil hazards to Buckingham is our mission. Respectfully submitted, Lakshmi Fjord, Ph.D., 108 Yogaville Way, Buckingham, Virginia, Deborah Branch, 2375 Warminster Church Road, Buckingham, Virginia, Highway 737, A-1 Zone, James River District, November 10th, 2020. Attention Board of Supervisors, in relation to gold mining project. Ladies and gentlemen, I have lived in Buckingham County all my life and raised my four children here. I served you in the school system as a teacher for 30 years. My children have remained here with their children and all serve you in the medical realm, school system, and DOC. I have not come to you today with maps and graphs to speak of impacts to infrastructure of land or quality of water, but to represent not only my family, but the hundreds of families and friends who live in the A-1 zone as well. We are not real estate, and you will not find our photos in your map keys, but we are here. We have dreams and aspirations in life as you do. This land is our place of safety inside our homes from COVID and unrest in the world around us, the place where our memories are made. We are people who have served you, not only with human resources, but financially for generations as well. My home burned down in 1994. As tragic as it was, it's not what I remember the most. I remember how all of Buckingham rallied around my family, setting up totes and filling them with basic needs. That's why I remain Buckingham Proud. Now I see the flames reignited. I can see the flames threatening to take away all that we hold so dear, our homes, our memories, and our children's and grandchildren's inheritance. We are all dedicated human beings to Buckingham to support you with our taxes and have done so for generations and hope to do so for generations to come. We vote no to any amendments to the A-1 zone that will allow core drilling and gold mining. We look to you to rally and protect us from these outside entities who threaten our livelihood and future. Respectfully and sincerely submitted, Deborah Branch."
My name is Sharon Williams, and my husband is Jeffrey Williams. We live at 3007 South James River Highway, Wyngona, Virginia, 24599, on Route 56. We are longtime residents of Buckingham County. My husband was born and has lived in this county for 55 years. The home we live in was graciously left to us eight years ago from his parents, George and Bessie Williams. His mother drove the school bus for Buckingham County approximately 26 years. So our home is not just a house, it's memories and a home we would like to remain in for the rest of our lifetime. We share this because apparently our home is right next to the proposed gold mining area. We are concerned not only of possibly losing our home, but of the toxic chemicals that could be used and released into our environment. I, Sharon, am a three-year breast cancer survivor, and I'm very concerned what that would mean for myself, but for everyone's health. Also, the fact that this mining process could shorten or even deplete our water supply is outrageous. No amount of money can take the place of water. Water is the essence of life, not gold. There is a particular creek that runs across the proposed mining properties that leads into the James River. If the chemicals were to get into the James, there would be an even bigger problem with our water supply. So because of these issues, we ask the Board of Supervisors to do whatever it takes to stop any process that would allow mining or any related activities in A-1. This company, Aston Bay, or any other company should not have the right to come into our community for the sake of greed and destroy the health, property, and well-being of Buckingham County residents. Thank you for your time and consideration to this important matter. Dear Buckingham County Supervisors, I was alarmed to hear that a foreign corporation requested a zoning change in Buckingham so that it can explore the area in preparation for extracting gold through an open-pit mine. Gold mining creates long-term problems for the surrounding environment and human health by polluting the water, soil, and air with toxic waste and heavy metals. This can cause real harm to people, animals, and plants, and does not seem at all compatible with our need for the healthy environment that our lives here depend on so much. I hope that you will choose to protect our environment by saying no to this company before their project goes any further. Thank you for your service, and I hope you're doing well during this pandemic. Best regards, Mark Zimmerman, 108 Yogaville Way, Buckingham, Virginia, District Five.
Stephanie Rinaldi, 2878 Warminster Church Road, District Five. Excerpts from Buckingham County's Comprehensive Plan, the Vision. Buckingham County will be a model of planned residential and business development that ensures sufficient managed economic growth to enhance the quality of life of its residents, to attract desired socially responsible new businesses, and to ensure a fiscally sound county government that is responsive to the needs of its residents and businesses while maintaining tax rates at a responsible level and while preserving the desired rural characteristics of the county. Attainment of this vision will be supported by the following planning principles. Seek sufficient economic growth by attracting socially and environmentally responsible businesses. Ensure that development is done in an environmentally sensitive, planned, and green manner that serves to preserve environmentally sensitive features. Preserve the county's natural resources that provide valuable benefits to the county and its residents. Continuing to recognize that one of its richest assets is agricultural forestry and rural lands, Buckingham wants to continue to protect these areas and natural resources to ensure that a rural quality of life is maintained. Protecting and preserving farmland, forest uses, livestock operations, wetlands, significant wildlife habits, and water resources are of primary importance to these areas. Future residential, commercial, and industrial development should be encouraged to locate in areas of the county where adequate public services are available or planned. Development that does occur in the rural agricultural and forestal portions of the county should be designed to incorporate significant open spaces and designed to minimize environmental impacts on the county's land and water resources. The specific location of future land uses should be determined by the zoning ordinance, and when required by the zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors review of specific land use requests. Such reviews should consider the compatibility and benefits of the use and the land impacts of a specific use on the surrounding neighborhood and larger community. When future development requests require Planning Commission review and Board of Supervisors approval, the economic and quality of life benefits of open space, agricultural, and forestland uses should be considered, as well as the adequacy of public facilities and services within the area. The environmental impacts of the development should also be considered. It is important to maintain a balance between development and preservation objectives throughout the county. End of excerpt. The issue before you regarding the amendment of the zoning ordinance to allow core drilling for commercial use in A-1 must be held to the standards set in the Comprehensive Plan. These are only some of the pertinent excerpts you must consider when determining your course of action. Core drilling, particularly the drilling already illegal occurring in A-1, is in direct opposition to the goals and visions this county has established for itself. Do not amend the zoning ordinance to allow this activity. Charge the company with the misdemeanors they have been committing. Find them as our laws allow. Protect our land and our water. Protect our community. Thank you for your work on our behalf.
Dear Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, my name is Tammy Huddleston. I reside at 806 711 Road in District Number Two. I'd like to begin by quoting the legendary film director John Ford. Mr. Ford said, "You can speak well if your tongue can deliver the message of your heart." I'm speaking from my heart. We've been hearing a lot lately about the possibility of gold mining in Buckingham County. I'd like to address this. The community of Warminster Church is very dear to me. I grew up there, and I have fond memories as a child of playing in the creeks and woods, helping my grandparents work in their gardens, and witnessing many hunting seasons. My family lived off the land, and they have been there for generations. Many of my family members and childhood friends still live there. When I visit, it is very special to me. These people are an example of what community is all about. To think that one day all of this could be polluted and destroyed forever due to gold mining breaks my heart. I care about how these families and future generations could be impacted. I'm sure you're aware that many people in Buckingham are struggling right now just to make ends meet. COVID has made this even harder. They are trying to keep food on their tables, but how will they with the increase of taxes we just received? Some have said that's why we need this mine, to bring in more revenue for the county. Yes, we need to attract more businesses to our county to help keep our taxes low, but not businesses that will have a negative impact on our people and environment. Have you thought about reconsidering the meals tax? I know it was previously voted down, but I don't think the people fully understood it. All they saw was the word "tax." Please consider educating our residents on how it works and its benefit, and please think long and hard about the effects of open-pit gold mining in Buckingham County. Respectfully, Tammy Huddleston.
Next comment is from Robert Day, District Five, 3337 Woodland Church Road, Buckingham. First, I would like to thank the members of this board for their service. I have recently been made aware of illegal drilling of core samples at home for a potential open-pit mine. This goes well beyond the normal character of A-1 zoning, and modern mining has no business in an agricultural zoning. Clearly, this activity should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law, with maximum fines and even reimbursement to those who have had to drill new wells because of the extravagant water use during this preliminary activity. Needless to say, open-pit gold mining will cause even worse damage, including poisoning air and water for many generations to come. Even the best financial deal will still see most of the wealth generated going to out-of-state and out-of-country investors. The whole idea that a special use permit here for modern mining operations could possibly be justified is absurd. While the mine is operating, they will disrupt traffic patterns, put extra burdens on road maintenance, not to mention animal and plant contamination, obvious noise and dust issues. Local inhabitants will be forced to flee with great losses of property value and/or health issues directly related to the mining operations. I have been told that company representatives have approached local landowners to purchase their property, saying, "You wouldn't want to live next to our mine anyway." Condemning many innocent citizens to these devastating losses is unconscionable. Any agreement with or retreat from these international terrorists is nothing short of dereliction of duty. I will remind you that as our local representatives, you have a duty of care to act promptly and decisively to prevent further harm to the county you serve. The next comment comes from Betty Zumbro, and she states, "Okay, so where are we with disallowing further illegal core drilling in our county? As I understand, we have to vote on a ZTA which allows us the authority to issue or not issue an SUP. Is this correct? I listened intently to the discussion in the zoning planning commission meeting several days ago. I only heard discussion as it relates to opposition to the core drilling. I heard the county attorney say that if we do nothing, then the matter is closed and no further drilling would be allowed. Every citizen that was heard, whether in person or by email, was adamantly opposed to this activity, albeit someone suggested that the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, together with citizen input, hear further expert opinions on this matter. I feel that would be an inordinate waste of time and energy. Simply put, core drilling will lead to open-pit mining. Let us nip this in the bud now. We do not wish this devastation to our way of life, our clean water, our clean air, and our quiet rural way of life and our sanity. Agree? Thank you." Betty Dunamet Zumbro. Congratulations. You have all been given another opportunity to protect the citizens' water and soil of Buckingham County. The only ordinance that you need to pass is one that protects our right to be free of chemical trespass. The proposed mining process will compromise the water table and wells with its asset-mine waste that includes dangerous chemicals such as mercury, arsenic, cyanide, lead, petroleum byproducts, and acids that can threaten groundwater. All citizens of Buckingham could be affected by this kind of mining, including you, even though you might not live near the sites. It is time to look at the big picture of health and safety instead of the short-term picture of gains that industrial revenue might bring to the county. I understand how strapped the county is for money, every county is, but this doesn't mean that our health and safety should be compromised by giving corporations the right to drill for commercial purposes. The zoning text amendment would allow core sampling for commercial purposes, changing an ordinance to allow drilling in an A-1 agricultural zone part of the county. Allowing exploratory drilling is just the beginning of opening the county doors to open-pit gold mining. We all know that. There is already a town council on record which protected their citizens from chemical trespass in Halifax, Virginia. They used every means they could, including a community bill of rights that declared they had a right to be free of chemical trespass, to protect their land, water, and citizens from uranium mining. In 2008, they succeeded, and uranium mining is still banned in Halifax. Gold mining sounds more exciting and not as troublesome as uranium mining, doesn't it? Everyone knows how dangerous uranium can be, but gold is a good thing, isn't it? My research bears out that it is not the product, but the process of gold mining that is dangerous to us. Gold mining requires massive amounts of water withdrawal, which would impact our water table, the source of our shallow drinking water wells. That is why you and all Buckingham County residents would be affected, not just the people in the area around the mines, who would also be affected by noise, air pollution, and industry traffic. So will you take up this opportunity to protect the citizens of Buckingham like your colleagues in Halifax did for their constituents in 2008? Say no to the zoning text amendment that would ultimately allow gold mining in Buckingham County. Protect our people, air, water, and soil for now and future generations. You can do this. It is in your power. Don't think for a second it is not. Mindy's Lotnick, 132 The Way, Buckingham, Virginia, 23921, Glenmore District. And our last email comes from Jay Sumati Thorne at 3355 Warminster Church Road, Buckingham, Virginia, to be presented to the Buckingham Board of Supervisors. We must stop gold exploration in Buckingham right now. If current drilling is allowed to continue, the entire county will be opened up to potential mining sites. The massive amounts of water needed even for test boring is already drying up wells and adjacent properties. We do not know what chemicals are being used to lubricate the exploration drilling bits, but the groundwater may already be experiencing contamination. You only need to refer to current and past sites to learn about the sad effects, sad effects, of open-pit mining. The most terrifying parts are the perpetual cyanide lagoons that remain long after the temporary mining projects are closed down. But the forced displacement of residents on neighboring properties is also terrifying in its own way. Adjacent homeowners are typically asked to relocate and offered a fair market price for their homes, but fair market price won't allow them to duplicate their holdings in different locations like, say, Albemarle County. If they refuse to sell, they are harassed by perimeter fencing, berms, and property line crowding. Other alarming aspects to local mining sites is the 24-hour onslaught of blasting noise and vibrations, truck traffic, and intense lighting. The workforce on mining sites tends toward a higher turnover of single males who are not invested in the community, its values, or the preservation. The temporary nature of gold mines encourages a fast-in, fast-out, take-what-you-can-get business approach that can and does leave the hosting locals wounded and depressed. Groundwater will be affected. Its contamination and depletion can distress not only neighboring areas, but the James River and the Chesapeake Bay as well. Expect endless lawsuits, confrontations, surveillance, demonstrations, and constant media exposure directed at the mining companies in the county of Buckingham. Expect this to go on for years unless it is stopped in its tracks now. Please defend your county, its water, its citizens, and its future by preventing further commercial gold exploration within the borders of Buckingham County. Thank you.
Are there all the comments you have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, or we move on to public hearings. Open to public hearing now for must have covered Davis.
Evening, gentlemen. I'll just start with a quick update on the situation. The website, Health Department website, does indicate an uptick in cases. Short of it is, is that a lot of that is due to the fact that the prisons are starting to do their point prevalence testing again, which under tests at one given time. So Buckingham facility did that a couple of weeks ago, so they're starting to get in a lot of positive results, or a lot, around 50 right at this point. Deal One is slated to do the exact same thing tomorrow, so it's going to grow, but the good thing is it's confined to those facilities like it was at the beginning of this thing. In terms of outside of those facilities, we're still averaging roughly two cases developed a day, and according to the Health Department, those are really associated with family gathering events, Sunday meals, and things like that. But kind of a good outlook for Buckingham outside of those facilities, not to blight the situation or anything, but I do think we fared well. So without further ado, with that said, since this is still a dynamic and progressing event, we ask that you guys re-adopt the emergency ordinance, that you guys adopt it towards the beginning of all of this, which the short of it allows for continuity of government of operations during the pandemic, including altering the process for conducting public meetings, restricting the use of public buildings or facilities, providing additional powers to the Director of Emergency Management, or Ms. Carter, to incur costs, waive procedures, and take the other temporary actions and suspending deadlines and procedures. We think that it's been a valuable asset throughout this response, and we'll need that tool in our pocket to continue our response. Any questions?
I'd like to add that this would be in effect until you come back and rescind it.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
We have a motion to...
We have two signed up to speak for the public hearing.
Any comments on it yet?
David Ball, District Three. David Ball, District Three.
I think, given the fact that, as I said earlier, there is adequate treatment now available, they waited till after the presidential election to announce that there are drugs available to treat people as well as inoculate people to make them immune to this disease, to take the government and shut it down again, to shut the people out, yet businesses like Walmart, Shoppers Food Warehouse, hardware stores, et cetera, continue to operate and do it successfully without any loss of revenue or availability to their consumers. Yet the government wants to shut everything down. You can't get anything done with government anymore. You ever try going to DMV? From what I understand, they basically have shut that down, and there are people piling up who want to get into DMV for particular services. They can't do it. You go to Richmond, you can't get into the government. The screw-ups that are occurring in government because of the shutdown and the fact that people aren't being responsible and putting proper protocols in place to assure that there isn't a vast spread of the disease, it's mind-blowing. You can't just shut down government. You can't shut people out. The whole purpose of government in this country is to be open, viewable, accessible to the public. About 100 years ago, a similar event with the Spanish Flu occurred in this country. The population of the state's then 120 million people, 2.2% of the population were infected and died from that disease. So the current situation in this country, you've got maybe 1, 2 tenths of percent of the population who have actually died, and we have over 3 and 1/2, well, we have around 3 and 1/2 million people in this country. The percent of people who are getting sick and cured is phenomenal. The response in this country of the medical society to treat this disease, to minimize the loss of life, has been fantastic. So the idea that we keep shutting down government, shutting out people, closing everything off, and I guarantee you, I've tried when you had a shutdown before, you can't watch anything about these meetings, you can't even properly broadcast. It shuts down, it shuts you out, you lose signal. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quinn Robinson, District Four.
This ordinance does not shut anything down. It has to follow, though, the governor's executive order, which we have no control over. But this ordinance is not to shut down any businesses, and we would only go back to Phase Two with government operations if the governor directs us to. So this ordinance is just so that we can continue our government operations during the pandemic.
Thank you. Again, my name is Quinn Robinson, District Four, out in Andersonville. I have some concerns about this, but it's not so much on the broader scale. I think it's important, this has been an incredible disaster for the entire world, and precaution is a good and reasonable thing, and it's been trivialized and politicized often, but perhaps things are improving to a point where we can get some things accomplished. But the main thing for Buckingham, as far as I'm concerned, and I refer you to the editorial in the Herald, the school board had their meeting in the cafeteria or the gymnasium or something, I'm not sure exactly where, but you need more space. People are being locked out of this because they can't get here on time or figure out how to make the online things work. I couldn't get into the county site last night. It's very annoying, and it's an obstacle, and you don't need them. You want people to have confidence and trust in what you're doing, and you're doing it well, so let them see that. But get, open it up again so more people can take part. It's very important, and I notice that this is only good for 60 days, and hopefully things will progress and it can be re-examined at that time. But all the medicine argues that caution be made, and it's not a matter of opening an economy up, because we're going to have troubles with that for some time. This is far from over. Anyway, thank you for your input and attention to this. It's very important. Thanks.
That's all.
All. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, before you all vote, I know that at the end of the ordinance, that was the emergency ordinance that you all adopted before, was the 60 days, but to try to pretty much save money of having a public hearing so often, that ordinance would be in effect until you rescind it.
All right. We have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a, just offer a general observational remark in terms of how this county has handled its response to this pandemic, which, you know, has put over 100,000 people in the grave. Let me just add that. And second of all, this document, through the governor's orders and through orders from the federal government, is going to really bring a lot of different options to how the public can interact with their elected officials. And this board has done nothing, in my opinion, as former editor and former, being in media, this board has done nothing, has done nothing to make anything less transparent with regard to COVID-19. We were one of the first counties to offer this online method of calling in your public comments, of emailing your public comments, of watching our proceedings in their entirety on YouTube. So I don't want to hear anything about how this board is not transparent. And by the way, you want to talk about helping businesses, this county board of supervisors put $60,000, $60,000 of our CARES Act money into helping small businesses, and we did that. Every board member will hear, will tell you that small businesses are the backbone of our economy, of the Virginia economy, and we're supporting them. And this document is going to do nothing but help continue to give the staff, and us give the staff the authority, to help keep our government open instead of shutting down, which is, this is no shutdown. And I've heard, and I'm sure my colleagues up here have heard some concerns about our audio, and obviously we're working on that, you know? We've used some CARES Act money, we've got some new technology up here in front of us that we're learning about. But Buckingham is a leader when it comes, and this board has seen to that when it comes to transparency, working with the people, being present even if it's not physically, but also virtually, taking those public comments on voicemail. So I resent the comment that we're shutting things down, we're shutting businesses down. We're helping businesses as best we can, and other parts of the government are too, and I can't speak to that. But I can tell you what this board has done, and we've helped keep things transparent. We are keeping our spaces, as Mr. Robinson said, we're wearing masks. So, you know, let's take a look at the facts, and I would make a motion that we approve this, or I would second the motion that we approve this ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, and seconded that we approve this thing, and go on until it's rescinded. Any other comments? Call for the vote.
Yeah, we have seven yes.
Second to it?
Yes, I made the motion, and Mr. Miles seconded it.
Okay, all right. Call for the vote, but this thing is...
Yours is the guy, we have seven yes. Seven yes.
Okay, motion carried, seven yes. This is Edmondson, we have zoning.
Chairman and members of the board, tonight we will have the public hearing for case 20 SUP 279. As you may remember from the introduction last month, this is for Frederick Jackson. His father, Charles A. Jackson, at 785 Sleepy Hollow Road, is the landowner. Frederick lives at 113 River Court Apartment A in Charlottesville, Virginia. His request is to obtain a special use permit for a private park playground. The property in question is Tax Map 54, parcel 177A, contains approximately 6 tenths of an acre. It is currently zoned A1. The zoning ordinance does not, of course, list private parks, playgrounds as a permitted use. However, within this A1 zoning district, private parks and playgrounds may be permitted by way of a special use permit. The planning commission may recommend, and the board may impose conditions. We do have 13 conditions attached to this SUP for the public hearing. Mr. Frederick Jackson is actually with us tonight via Zoom to answer any questions that you or the public may have as far as commentary.
Okay. Do I have any comments?
That's in my district, and everybody I've talked to is for it. I just make, I'm ready to approve it tonight. It's a good thing for the community.
We have any comments for the public? We have one, David Ball, District Three.
And I do think you ought to approve it with the cutback on restrictions because it's such a small park, serving such a small confined community, to try and put all these hard restrictions on it make no sense. I will also point out, looking here, I only see two of seven supervisors who actually are wearing masks, the other five in the back row never wear masks at this meeting, so it's an observed event.
That's a lie, because I've worn a mask before.
You're a distance, too.
In a six-foot distance between each one of these members.
Yes, but you require...
Put a mask on when I move close to Mr. Bryant. You take care of Mr. Ball, and I'll take care of Mr. Bryant, okay?
We're observing what we see.
Okay.
So the other thing is, there's a lot of information that I will say with regards to the gold, because I wanted to hear what people said, and having a background in that and knowing what's been done here...
This doesn't have anything to do with gold? You're making your comments on the playground?
Right.
Stick to that, please.
Okay, so you don't want to hear anything?
I want to hear what your comments are about the current hearing that we're hearing on, not about gold.
All right, and I've told you, I think that because it is such a small area, and putting hard restrictions on it wouldn't make sense. You need to make it open and accessible because it serves a small local community. Give them the availability to have more features there without having all these setback restrictions and everything that were originally proposed on them that would have limited it to virtually nothing. I mean, it's a small community, a small property. Can't really, and it's for playground, for the community, it's not for building, for homes, and accessible, so there.
Any other comments?
No, sir, it's all.
Board members have a comment on it? Do I want to make a motion that we...
Mr. Chairman, I do have one comment.
Okay.
Ms. Edmondson, you said the person is via Zoom?
Yes.
Hey, I noticed that it's going to be operating from dawn to dusk, so there will be no lighting?
That's correct. That's the way the conditions have passed through the planning commission.
Okay. And they're okay with that?
Mr. Jackson had agreed to the conditions, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Do I want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve it.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Made a second, that we approve this SUP. Any other comments? Call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chambers' screen went dead.
Bottom left corner, not bottom left, the icons are, double tap that, and it'll reboot it.
Change colors on.
They are with us, this is a new system, we're trying to make things better for you.
Vote it. Good, right here. I'm going to vote yes, and we didn't do it.
I get to go. I ain't voting.
You announced the courage, go courage. VDOT Road Matters, about to have any?
Mr. Chairman, the VDOT is calling in to talk to you all.
Good evening, board. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, good. I turned my video on as well. I got a good update for you guys tonight. You guys have asked me several times over the past eight months when the six-year plan, improvement plan would resume, and we just got that good news late last week that the pause has been removed and we're resuming the program. So we're going to pick up right where we left off. If you'll remember in spring, we did a work session, and we were ramping up to do a public hearing, and that was right when it got paused. So tonight I need to request at the December meeting to hold a public hearing, and I've sent the programming to Administrator Carter so that we can use that with the resolution that will hopefully pass next month based off the work we did in the early spring. So that's great news, I'm excited. I think the untapped growth program is a great program. As far as the update on the work that we've been doing, we've been battling wet weather, it seems like, for the last six months, and we've had a lot of stopped-up pipes. We currently have a couple more that we need to get throughout the county that we're aware of. We've got one on Union Church Road, we've got a few on Tuffle Road. Then Supervisor Miles brought a slope to my attention on 60, and I was unaware of it, but my guys have actually been monitoring that area for a while, and they said it hasn't really been getting worse, but it is on our list of things we want to fix. So probably over the next couple of months, we're hoping to either place some concrete or maybe some asphalt material to help kind of change the way the party's going down that slope right there across from Route 60 Convenience. But, so we've had our eye on it, and there's not any kind of problem there that's structural that could affect the road integrity at all. It's mostly a setting, and it hasn't been getting worse as long as they've been watching it, but they were aware of it, and they've just been trying to get it scheduled. So I'd like to thank you for bringing that to my attention. It taught me something new about the community here. We're getting close to finishing our mowing for the year. Secondary and primary, we're kind of wrapping that all up. If it wasn't going to rain the next two days, I think we would finish it this week, but I think we'll probably end up finishing it next week. Let's see here.
What again?
We've been machining our gravel roads and we've been, we had that enough caught up before Tropical Storm Zeta came in. Uh, we're trying to catch back up on that in preparation, you know, to get them ready for the winter. So, we're almost there. And then thinking about winter, uh, we did a dry run for our snow event, uh, for our snow operations. That's where we mount up all our equipment and look for anything that has deteriorated such as hoses or electrical connections. But, uh, all of our stuff is in good shape again and ready for the winter. We've also been working to get our, uh, emergency snow contractors that we used to help us plow the roads, making sure their equipment's ready and getting them signed back up. Uh, so we're in very good shape going into winter. Uh, a couple other quick updates of stuff that's, uh, come up over the last few months. Troublesome Creek Road where it connects with 60. The radius, the radii, I'll call them, on each side of that road have a habit of getting, uh, kind of beat out by traffic to where those drop off. And we've put stone back in them several times over the last few months. And it seems like we're just kind of chasing our tail right there. So, just over the last few days, we've put a plan together. We're gonna extend the pipe that goes under Troublesome Creek Road, eight feet on either side. And we're gonna add fill material and improve those radii with asphalt. So hopefully after we do that, we'll never have to touch it again. So, uh, if weather and everything cooperates with us, we'll be out there sometime within the next two weeks to do that. So I think that's, uh, a good, good thing that we're about to try to accomplish there. Uh, then the other, the last thing on the event, on the agenda for me to report on is a little bit of bad news. We had a pipe get washed out on Route 664. But me and the team here in the Farmville residency, we've, uh, done the preliminary engineering. We've sized the pipe, uh, we're actually gonna put multiple pipes back in. So we have to get an environmental permit for the work we're gonna do there. And we've all, like, that's not really holding us up though, because we had to order a bunch of different materials. And they're gonna be being delivered to that site. So you'll start seeing that stuff show up out there. And, uh, we'll get that repaired made, but it's gonna be, that road's gonna be closed for, uh, I think, the notice that we put in Virginia traffic goes into January. So, uh, you'll start seeing materials delivered and work probably starting sometime in early December. But, so, I hate it when a road gets closed, but we are stacking it, trying to get it back open as fast as we can. So I guess that wraps up my report session. Do you guys have any intentions, any matters that you want to bring to my attention?
I don't have any.
Scott. Scott, I have one.
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, this is Donnie Bryant. Were you able to look at the runoff, uh, right there at 6939 Bell Road?
Yes, sir, um, I think Eric Taylor out there, actually, I didn't look at it myself. But he was, it's kind of like a shared driveway connection there. And he was saying to him, he didn't, he, I actually am flack on my part of the deal that I made with him. But he wanted me to get clarification from you of what type of improvement you thought we needed to make. Because he said he didn't see any site distance or drainage or drop-off problems there in the state right away. I think I was having trouble hearing you last month, or last time you brought it up. But I should have called you by now and I apologize. But could you tell me what specific issue you were wanting us to address?
Yeah, can you take a look at it? Um, the water pours off of that, um, that area, right there at that driveway. And it, and it runs along the, if you're looking towards Dillon, away from the Chuck Stop, uh, the water runs down that hill and along the road and it's puddling, which is creating, you know, a kind of bad puddle there, um, when we get heavy rains because of the way grass and stuff is grown in the ditch area. You know, there's really no place for it to go.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll take a closer look at it. Uh, I sent him out there and he, he actually took some video of it, sent it to me. And he said, "I'm not seeing anything," but he said, "If you could, get clarification." And he said, "I'd be happy to come back out." So now that I've heard you more clearly and understand a little bit better, we'll take a second look at it.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
I got something, Mr. Bryant. Uh, this is Supervisor Davis. Carthville Road, when you're coming from Bryant Store West, the road is deteriorating. It's about approximately a quarter of a mile from Bryant Store coming west back towards 15. The road, like, the shoulder is trying to give away and you can see the road crumbling. A couple citizens brought it to my attention and I rode down and looked at it the other evening. If you could get somebody down to look at that, it would be very much appreciated.
Okay, so a quarter mile from Bryant Store heading toward 15?
Yes, after you get past the curve up on the hill, it's right there. It looks like the road is just, the sides of it are coming loose, so.
Okay, what was the actual road's name itself? I missed that part.
Carthville Road.
Carl?
Cartersville, Cartersville.
Oh, Cartersville Road, I got it now. Virtual world does not make it easy.
You're exact.
Carthville Road, yeah, I got a good note wrote down on that one. We'll, uh, we'll take a look at that section and see if we can get it back.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, have.
Uh, thank you, Scott.
Okay, thank you, board. Good evening, I'm, if you guys need me, I'm always a phone call away, but please.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question for Scott, if you don't mind, sir. Um, we, we need to schedule a public hearing for December the, it's not the 11th, is it?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth for a public hearing with regard to the six-year improvement plan. And, and I'll make a motion to that effect if no one has anything else.
Files made a motion, they're second to that motion, we have a public hearing on December 14th.
Second.
Paged and second, any discussion? Call for the vote. At seven, yes, be approved, be a public hearing on the 14th. Nonviolence matters. Consider requests from the planning commission regarding a work session. Direction regarding the core drilling issue. I think, uh, it's intended for the set for the November the 16th, which is Sunday, I believe.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At our last planning commission meeting held on October 26th, it was indicated by our planning commission members that they would like to provide an update to the status as to where they were with disseminating information in regard to commercial core sampling. The regular meeting was held October 26th. And of course, there was a discussion period regarding those activities. The planning commission believes that expert opinion would be beneficial prior to any determination regarding prospecting activity. The planning commission made a motion at their meeting to ask the board of supervisors to provide guidance and direction forward with respect to this subject matter. The planning commission, by way of consensus, has decided to ask a panel of experts to speak on this matter at the upcoming work session. At this time, if you find it agreeable, the planning commission is requesting your attendance at the planning commission work session on Monday, November 16th at 6:00 PM.
Normally, it's seven o'clock meeting on the planning commission, so why, why are we doing six o'clock?
To make it a bit more agreeable, some of the board of supervisors had asked, um, in other forums to try to make this 6:00 PM.
Well, I'm just saying, it's a normal, normally it's at seven o'clock, you get a call, all rested, the planning commission, let them know.
Well, usually Wednesday or Thursday, prior to the work session or meeting, I always send a text message to them to notify. So, if, if everyone finds it agreeable, if not, if you want to change it to 7:00 PM, please, by all means, make it.
I think, I think the planning commission, uh, voted, uh, us to, for the meeting at six o'clock when the meet with the supervisors, the last meeting or meet before last.
I know there was some discussion to change it to six, one meeting jointly.
I think we expected it. I think we expected it to last for a while, so we wouldn't start early.
Yes, I would imagine that this fact-finding session with the panel of experts would last quite a while.
Get six o'clock, Ben.
Yes, sir, if that's agreeable.
Yes.
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 I've got a question, Mr. Chairman, for Ms. Edmondson, if I may, sir.
Go ahead.
Could you talk about, please, if, if it's, if it's okay, the, this panel of experts and who you sought out or who the county has sought out, I should say, I should ask. And what sort of representation that, that under the planning commission has tasked you as staff to look for? And sort of what you've got going, Ms. Edmondson?
Sure, so there have been various state agencies, I do have a list of those. And we do have responses back confirming multiple members from some others. They're still working to put together a representative that will most likely attend via Zoom in an effort to, to maintain virtual and, and social distancing. Um, I have reached out to the DEQ, the Health Department, the Division of Mining and Mineral Energy, extension agents through Virginia Tech, geologists at, um, within Virginia Tech in the Geosciences Department, the Office of the Attorney General and the Department of Forestry. As of right now, we have one, three, five confirmed panel, uh, experts that will be on the panel. And I'm still awaiting three other offices.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And us agreeing to meet with the planning commission during your work session obviously does not bind us to do anything. We are simply exploring some of the options that we have, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, this would not be a regular meeting, it would just be a work session.
Right, therefore we couldn't vote, is that right?
You, you can vote.
Okay.
Vote and tell me. They already voted on that, that one.
Action to accept the invitation, planning commission. Accept the invitation of the planning commission.
Yeah, I don't think there's any need to have the people who are actually doing the drilling to come in and talk to? So we know what they're doing, what they've done, and how they're doing. So we'll have something to work.
I would like to have this be as honest as possible, though.
I agree.
Well, I understand that part, but I mean,
maybe let on.
You ask them questions about what the drillers have done, so you, you know what to ask. You can't, you don't know what to ask if you're not, they're not here to tell you what they've done or what they're doing.
Right, and if, Mr. Chairman, if, if, if I may, Supervisor Allen, if, if they want to, if we go down the road of a ZTA, if they want to put in for an application, I think that's when we would hear from them. That's my understanding of it.
Oh, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, I'd like to know what's going on before we get there.
I, well, I was trying to get information as to what gold mining actually is, because I don't know.
Well, I don't know if the people coming will be up to you, but.
Well, you know, they tell you, should tell you what the impact is. And if you've got people from EPA and all this kind of stuff coming to.
Well, the gold mining part, I mean, we already got zoning set up for the gold.
Yeah, we need to hear from the experts on this.
All right, we'll go on to the county, uh, attorneys. Information regarding the core drilling process as related to the county's.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would move that we meet with the planning commission during the work session on Mon- Monday, November.
Don't be voting on that.
Sixteenth at six o'clock.
We've already voted on that, I think.
We haven't?
Haven't, okay, alright, you got a motion made. A second to that and a second to that, any discussion? Call for the vote then. Unanimous, courage, we'll meet at six, six o'clock. Now, Mr. County Attorney.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, uh, the, the, what it says on the agenda item is probably more information in there than what I've really got for you. What we're talking about tonight is sort of a rehash of what I spoke with the planning commission about when they met. And I know that several of you were there and heard it, so I hope this won't be, uh, too boring for you. What I want to do is talk a little bit about process. So in talking about process, please understand that this is not a statement that says I'm in favor of this or in favor of that. It's not a further discussion of the interaction between the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. This is simply a discussion of how you move forward if you want to do something or the implications if you don't do something. So that, that's sort of the topic that I want to talk about. And we'll play a little bit off the notes that were in your, uh, board package, that I know you have reviewed, so I'm gonna start sort of on the back of that. Got a situation here in the county that's been discovered relating particularly to, I'm gonna call it, commercial prospecting. There may be other ways to describe it, we may end up, if you do something, describing it differently. But for the purposes of this discussion, we're gonna call it commercial prospecting. Now, that commercial prospecting is happening in A1. The zoning office in consultation with me, we don't see where that operation is permitted in an A1. But we understand there's a lot swirling around it, so, uh, they've been advised that's the position of the county. So now, the topic's been before you for about a, a little bit over a couple of months now. And I know you're, want to know, what are your options as you go forward? So I see it that you really have three options. I'm talking about whether they're good, bad, or indifferent, but the options themselves are, if you do nothing, in other words, you decide, we've heard everything we want to hear about it, and we just don't care to change what we got. The implication with that, the status quo would remain the same. And the interpretation that the county has right now is prospecting, commercial prospecting would not be allowed. So that's your first option, just do nothing, let it, let it ride. And then zoning and we'd have to take additional action if the violation or perceived violation to make a determination in the proper way to bring it into that. The second thing you could do is you, and it ultimately resides on you, though we'll talk about procedure a little bit later here, you can say, "Okay." We don't have any heartburn with it. We don't think we need to worry about it, we don't want to have any control over it. You can permit it as a use by right. In other words, to do that, you've got to make a zoning text amendment. You'd go down into the A1 area and where you have permitted things that you can do by right, you'd need to put language in there that would allow this operation to continue. And with the planning commission, we talked about a little variation. There was some concern, was there a way to make people register if they did that and just them register? I won't go into that tonight because that's sort of a, a different discussion. So that's the second thing you can do. The zoning text amendment to allow, uh, commercial prospecting, maybe different words, to occur as a matter by right. In other words, they don't have to do anything, come in, go to work, do whatever they want to do. The third option would be to, uh, go into, it requires a zoning text amendment, would be to go into the A1 district or any other district you wanted this to occur in for any of these. If you wanted to do a by-right use and you wanted to be allowed in other districts, you'd, you'd make that zoning text amendment in those districts too. And you would amend, down where it says, uh, uses that are permitted with a use permit, a special use permit, you would amend that to say it would be allowed with a permit. And again, whether you call it commercial prospecting or whatever we've come up with, there's some discussion going on. And maybe, uh, geotechnical boring or exploring or those types of things might be the way we want to go. So the general pattern would be do nothing, make it a right where people can do it, but they don't have to do anything. Or have them reply for a special use permit. And to do that, you'd make your text amendment in the zoning ordinance at that place. Now, what's the path forward? You know your options. While all the amendments, if you're gonna do a text amendment, comes ultimately back to you. All zoning stuff passes through the planning commission. They can adopt and say, "Hey, we want you to look at this," and you can look at it and refer it back to them. Or you can say, "Planning commission, take a look at this." And you can do that independently of each other, but ultimately it's gonna go back to the planning commission and then back up to you. back up to you. The path you're choosing, appears that you're choosing, you're gonna have a work session with them to sort of get a temperature of the water, hear the information, get some ideas of where you want to go. When you're holding those joint hearings, that's sort of saying you to the planning commission, the board's saying to the planning commission, we want you to look at this thing. Now, I can go back to the planning commission with specific directions, and they can say, we've studied it, we don't think that's a good idea, here's our report. And then you get to decide really what you want to do with it. You can stay with the original plan, you can modify your plan, you can do nothing, and you come back to that type of arrangement. But all those paths are gonna have to go through the planning commission with ultimately the board supervisors in control. It's gonna require a public hearing, and the planning commission, it's gonna require a public hearing by the board. That can be a joint public hearing. What I would ask that you be thinking about is when you have this work session that you've agreed to be a part of next Monday night, that you begin to formulate what you really want the planning commission to look at, and whether you want to continue to have a joint public hearing with them once you decide what you want them to look at. Uh, the advantage of that, you all hear the same thing at the same time. So, Monday night, you're gonna gather information. You need to consider whether you want to continue to work jointly with the, uh, planning commission, and I don't mean this in a negative way, whether you want your own meetings, whether you want to have joint meetings with the planning commission, to get some direction of what you really want to put out for the public to come comment on. And once they come commenting on, you're not bound specifically to the language you use. There is some flexibility. Once you get the public comments, you can form your, you can craft your language a little differently. But as I say, the information on the agenda items is a lot broader than what I want to talk about tonight. Try to answer any questions that you have, but that's , uh, about what I have for this part, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have any. You all have any? Thank you, Mr. Rider. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
We have a presentation from, uh, Vico.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, that presentation will be in December.
Okay.
Uh, that, and, and what that is about is Supervisor Chambers has served on the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors for 30 years, so the executive director of Virginia Association of Counties will come to present him with a plaque of recognition.
Right. You know, you said, oh, Brother Chambers. Department of Agents reports, item consideration. I guess, Hector, Lieutenant School, is that?
Dr. Hicks, are you on the line?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Evening, Mr. Chair, Board Supervisor, and Carter. Thank you for providing the Wi-Fi hotspot to our students. It has been a tremendous help with our teachers and finding synchronous virtual instruction during this time. This is very appreciative, so I just wanted to first start off with thanking you all for that. They're requesting approval of the fiscal year 21 budget update. This is a routine budget update, revising our budget to include changes in state and federal grants, since the original adoption back in May.
To make it clear, this is the budget that we are operating in right now.
Do you want to approve to transfer the funds for that? Just want to approve the transfer of funds, right?
Right, the request is, Mr. Chairman, to approve the transfer of funds, right?
I got no problem with that.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, if I can find the button.
And this is mainly to revise the present budget they're in right now by changes in federal and state money.
Ladies and the board.
Had a motion and a second to adjustments for the current fiscal year, right?
Right, yes.
So we need to take a vote.
I guess we do.
Looks like a lot of grants. Back money.
If you're looking at categories, you see that instruction, the adjustment is an additional $587,046, and your administration attendance and health is a increase of $453,077. People transportation is an increase of $40,884. Operation and maintenance is an increase of $179,001, and technology is an increase of $478,069. And again, that's state and federal money, uh, not local money.
Do you need to adopt that budget now?
Yes, sir. You need to approve the amendments.
Okay, approve the adjustments on it. Question on it? I think most of we approve it.
Mr. Chambers made the motion, Mr. Miles seconded it.
Okay, motion made, and seconded. Any other, uh, other comments? Call for the vote, then. All right, unanimous.
Hey, Dr. Hicks, if you want to, if you will address the second request for the FY20 in your balance money.
Yes, the second request is we have $579,000 savings from the closure of schools last year, as outlined in the document that you have in front of you. And from that $579,000, we would like to propose to request $279,000 of that money back to provide all contracted employees, with the, with the exception of myself, a two percent one-time bonus.
That'd just be a 2% bonus for the board members.
Yes, it would be a one-time 2% bonus.
Chairman, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Ms. Hicks, this is Don Matthews, District 3. Um, I'm just curious, first thing is, even reached the halfway point of this year, this school year, and you're wanting to give a bonus. Why, what reasoning is that for?
Because this, this $579,000 was from last year's money. Based on the fact that the employees did not get the 2% raise that we had projected for them to get this year because of the budget tax. So we just thought it in honor of them and all of their hard work and effort that they've shown throughout this school year and throughout the years that they would appreciate that one-time 2% bonus.
I have one other question. Typically, uh, when you give a bonus, is that money counting towards their Virginia retirement?
No.
Well, why would you not want to give them a, a raise, a 2% raise instead of a bonus? Because that way, that money would count towards their Virginia retirement.
Yes, and that would cost a lot more than the $279,000.
Well, what are you basing the 2% on?
Their actual salaries to their current mechanism.
And, Dr. Hicks, I believe that you're saying the bonus would be a one-time expenditure with the money.
Right.
Yeah, where a 2% raise would be reoccurring.
Exactly, yes.
Well, that's my another, that leads to another question. You're halfway through the year, and you've, you've got over a half a million dollars that you've already saved from when the, when the schools closed, and what that, what time does that date run through? What, what, what period of time is this?
This payment was from June, June 30th of, of last, this past year, 2020. We're not operating. This money is not coming off of this budget, but it's on by 2020 budget.
Okay, so you've saved this much money in three months? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
All right. So my question to you would be, if you go to December, how much more money are you gonna save? And that way, you could give them a raise of 2%, and, and it would still count towards their retirement instead of a one-time situation. And you could also freeze the raise for next year if you give it to them this year. I just think you're wasting money by not putting it in their retirement system.
Well, basically, I was just trying to save some money on this end, but if that's something you all want us to take a look at, I'd be more than happy to do that, and I'm sure they would be more appreciative of that than for the bonus. I was just trying to give them something with the savings that we knew we had already saved from last year.
Well, I don't like to, to give someone a bonus when they haven't completed the, the year in task. Uh, so, I mean, that's, that's my question. So if anybody else has anything else, I'll turn the floor over to them.
Well, I, I got no prob, no problem with it, but, you know, she had tried to give a bonus for the employees, but I look at that 2%. Um, I would like to see them give us, uh, I look at the bus drivers and the cafeteria workers. If a person making 50,000 or 60,000, they'll get a right good bonus, and the person under that, the little man, he could be kind of stuck in the hole. But I like to see them doing one thing, bonus for everybody.
Same money all across.
Same money all across the board, Miss Hicks, is what I'm saying.
To include non-contracted employees.
Right. What, what we did one time, we had done that 2% too, and, and the little people was really getting nothing compared with the high service. So we reconsidered on the pers, I was on the personnel committee, and give everybody a one ta, uh, the bonus of the same thing right across the board, one figure. That's something I would like to take a look at. I think it's a good thing you recognize your employees, and the people do a good job, they, they deserve.
I agree.
I think you should do it. I appreciate you, applaud you for doing it. But I'm just looking at the, the smaller people that aren't making as much as others. That's all I'm saying. You understand what I'm saying? If you give a, a one figure for everybody, what I'm saying.
You'd be happy to take a look at that.
What I'm saying is this, Dr. Hicks, um, if, uh, Jordan was making $60,000 a year, and I'm making $15,000, $20,000 a year, look what he'll get, versus what I'll get, at 2%. You see what I'm saying?
I know exactly.
And then if you give me and Jordan $500, both of us get $500, then we'd be on, you know, both of us ain't got a, you know, I think they fail.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Yes, and that, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see him add the non-contracted employees as well.
I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I'm talking about everybody. The non, like the school bus drivers, and the cafeteria workers, and all of those, you know, the ones that, you know, the whole fleet that I'm talking about.
Dr. Hicks, if I could ask a question, what percentage of the school staff are non-contracted versus contracted?
Um, about 34.
Percent?
Four times, non-contracted.
I think they've included two percent.
People, just 34 people that are non-contracted that work four times.
Right. Them the ones I like to see included.
Like that, because of course, non-contracted also includes substitutes and people like that who do nights, sometimes.
Right, I understand.
You, I, I wouldn't want to put you on the spot, but do you know right off the number of total employees you have, including bus drivers, everyone?
So it's over 300.
I'd add to what, Mr. Chairman, I'd add to what Supervisor Chambers said. I definitely think that the teachers have worked very hard along with the parents, and, you know, we can, I'm sure the school board's addressing that, hope, hopefully in a very meaningful way, but there's no doubt that the teachers, and the school bus drivers, and the cafeteria workers, and the paraprofessionals, and all those folks have been working hard and deserve to be recognized. Dr. Hicks, could I ask you a question related to the schools in terms of what the, I know a lot of parents and a lot of folks that we've heard from are have questions about the reopening of the schools. Could you update us on that, please?
Well, want me to talk about that before you all take an action on what we just talked about? Would you all like to be?
I'm saying, I'm all in favor of what you're doing. I think it's a great idea, but I'm just saying that, you know, to bring the other people in on it too.
I think, I think the wise thing to do would be to come back with some figures to our board on, I mean, we, I'm, don't want to fly by the seat of my pants here. Uh, I'd like to have some concrete information on what you're talking about dollar-wise.
What are you talking, Mr. Matthews, bringing back to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Can you do that, Dr. Hicks?
Now, what am I bringing back? Am I dividing the $279,000 equally by the number of employees?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is that what you want me to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Some to a little over $800 per employee.
Okay.
$800 per employee.
Come over a little, a little over $800 per employee.
Have non-contracted staff worked during the pandemic, Dr. Hicks?
They had to, they had to clean the schools, or something like that, didn't they? They had to clean the schools and whatnot?
He said some did, some didn't.
I don't think you should cut them out. I think you should bring everybody on board.
I'm just asking.
So you're gonna wait for the numbers, or you're just gonna tell them to do $279,000, split it between everybody?
I think the $279,000, that'd break for $800 a piece, right, Ms. Carter?
Possible.
She could divide it up to make sure it's the exact number, but that's an average, I think. 300 times 800, it comes to, what, 240? So that's close.
We're saving about $800 a piece, uh, Dr. Hicks, roughly.
That's with non-contracted, right, Ms. Carter?
Everyone.
Everybody, I'm, I'm telling you, everybody.
Sure, I just didn't hear.
Okay.
Back them.
Now, we have a motion here, uh, made by Supervisor Chambers and seconded by Mr. Miles.
I didn't, I didn't.
That was, that was the other one.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Dr. Hicks. Um, I've searched and searched and searched, and I can't find it anywhere. In the amended budget, it doesn't look like that, uh, they have proposed a teacher pay raise. Um, in fact, it looks like they froze everything. Is that what you're getting out of the amended budget from the governor?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm getting, yes. Yes, they're, they're fro, they're frozen all of the, um, pay raises and increases that we're looking at for teachers.
And from what I've, from, from the little bit that I could gather, it's frozen in 2022 as well, because he doesn't want to commit himself based on the economy right now.
Yes, that's what it is as of right this minute. Now, I know there's talks with the legislators, and I've met, I've met with them. Yes, that's what it is as of right this minute. Now, I know there's talks with the legislators and I met, I met with them some today and some last week to discuss, uh, the Virginia State Department has met with the legislators to discuss our concerns of, about teacher pay. And bringing that pay up to the national level. As well as I mentioned to them, even with the insurance, you know, they treat us as Virginia state employees through VRS, but we do not get the benefits that the regular state employees get with health insurance. So all of that information is, is being presented to them and to see what happens when they meet again in, in January, February time.
Good luck on that fight. I've been fighting that one for years, but good luck.
I know.
Hopefully, we can fight together from different ends, so. Um, yeah, I, I, is there a motion on the floor for that?
Oh, it's not a motion, we, 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 this thing, although we're gonna accept this two percent.
Mr. Chairman, I, I recommend that, that we take the, the money that is being proposed for the bonus and split it equally among the employees across the board to include non-contracted employees as well.
Second motion.
Hey, that's, that sounds like a, a good motion. Any other discussion on that?
Could, could I ask one question? And, I, I mean, I, I do have, I, I, before I vote on this, I would like to know what the, what the reopening plan is for our schools, if there is one.
We got a motion on the floor first. Let's get the motion.
Don't have one right now, Jordan. The school board's not going to meet again until, um, at, at the last meeting, they voted to stay closed until, uh, the first semester is over. So they will address the situation, uh, hopefully at the end of the first semester. And that depends on what the COVID count is going to be. I do know that the, like Cody presented, I saw the day where the state average has ticked up to six point two percent. Uh, at one time, we were down to four point seven percent. So, you know, it depends on how, how safe we are in the community. Uh, whether or not, you know, we can safely reopen based on the COVID count.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Miles?
Yes, in part it did.
Motion is that we, uh, give the school, uh, employees, uh, divide the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars equally among her employees and, uh, even down to con, non-contract workers. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Question on that? Off of the vote. Everybody voted, carry unanimous.
So much, I know they appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, consider a pardon to the Board of Building Code officials. How many need to be appointed?
They call them.
Yes, all of them are vacant.
Mr. Chairman, I did talk to Larry Haskins, who lives in my district, and he's willing to continue his service, if that helps.
Yes, a motion, Jordan. Motion.
Sure, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, so I would move that we, uh, reappoint Larry B. Haskins for the term that is noted, um, for the, uh, Board of Build, Building Code Appeals, sir.
Did you hit the button, Jordan?
I did not, Mr. Chambers, thank you. I guess, can you? Anyway.
Are you, you are. Why don't you just ask them all to be reappointed?
I know Gordon Rush can't do it, 'cause he's dead.
I can't do it, I'm here.
Have some pool.
I don't know about the rest of them, but, uh.
I guess, uh.
Who, whose district is he in?
That's.
It'd be in, uh, Joe's district.
My district is, uh, district five, uh, six. Can I do that next month?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
In fact, why don't we just wait and come back with next month with one, two, three, four, five, six names?
And, and I don't think they have to reside in the district that you appoint them if you have a difficult time.
Okay, all right. But take my name off it, Mr. Chairman, please.
We have to take your name off because you're on the board, so a replacement for that, though.
Gone.
Gone.
All right, everybody come back with a, with a name, uh, at a next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Consider appointment, uh, reappointment to the Industrial Development Authority. Free. Jeffrey Stafford is, uh, represented, uh, that's in your district, isn't it?
I think he, I think he'll do it again. I'd like to reappoint him anyway.
Okay, all right. Mr. Matthews, reappoint, uh, must.
I'd like to make the motion to reappoint Jeff.
Okay. Uh, second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion made, seconded, uh, Mr., uh, Stafford be, uh, reappointed to the, uh, Industrial Development Authority in the discussion?
Paul, do you contact these people? I mean, typically, okay.
All for the vote. unanimous, okay, it's carried. Mr. Davis again, uh, Services Director, update regarding. Rescue Squad Transition.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Okay, uh, good evening again, gentlemen, and I'll make this quick. Um, just in regards to the transition, we're still moving mountains. Um, things are going well. Ms. Carter's gonna key on something here in a minute that's a pretty important item, and then Mr. Wright will have another important item within his update. But while I'm here, um, the first thing I'd like to talk to you guys about is the Glenmore Station renovation project. Um, I gave you guys three different items, um, just now. Uh, the first would be a, a memo, more or less, um, from, uh, Ms. Carter and Mr. Wright and, and myself. Uh, so justification for utilizing the design-build approach to contract with the firm for those renovations. Um, and you can read the specifics about why we have come to the opinion that design-build is the best approach. Um, but, uh, and then to follow that, um, it is pretty much the exact same thing, except for we specifically state that the contractor would be the Jamerson and Lewis Company, um, to complete the design-build of that Glenmore Station. And more or less ends up being a turnkey project that they would turn out for us, aside from the county, uh, has a statutory requirement to secure its own, um, architectural design individual, uh, under direct contract for consulting reasons. And I think we're able to utilize the exact same, uh, individual that you, you utilized for the library project. Um, so any questions on either of those items? Okay, and then the last thing to follow all of that up would be a resolution uh, from you guys to authorize us to, uh, proceed with the design-build and, and construction management contracts um, that Mr. Wright is working with.
All three items before you are, are properly before you, but are there's an order of adoption that I would ask that you give to those. If you'd adopt the resolution as county policy to use design bill, you've got to have that in place before you can move forward. After you adopt the resolution, then you need specifically for this project to find the justification appropriate to use design bill in this particular project. And then finally, uh, the other one would be the justification to move forward with Jamerson Lewis. So there is, they're properly before you, but there is a particular order that I'd ask you to consider.
Give them to, you gave them to them in that order, I believe. Yes, you have them in order.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
I've got to put that in, hold on.
Motion made a second, but.
Second one.
Okay.
Technical issues.
Have to type it in.
Okay.
Resolution that we passed.
Made a second that we approved the resolution in the discussion? All for the vote. Carry unanimous.
Thank you. And the, and the last two items that I would update you guys on at this time would be, uh, all of the assets of the rescue squad are now assets of the county with a use agreement in place for them to continue doing business um, until December the fifteenth. And then lastly, we've secured a contract signed by both parties, DRT and us, uh, for them to continue to provide staffing services for eighteen and a half months that we all discussed and you all approved at the last, uh, board meeting. Any questions on any of that?
Cody, they need to vote on the next two things, two and three.
Motion to, to accept the design bill?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made a second, uh, design bill? Any other discussion? All for the vote. Carry unanimous. Move forward the bids, is that the fourth, third one, excuse me? Make a motion to move forward with the bids.
Second.
Contract, sorry. Motion made, I have a go follow with the contract on the Glenmore building, in discussion? All for the vote.
Sorry, Joe.
Motion carried unanimous. All right, Mr. Davis, you got, uh.
Cody Grant, it's next.
Um, so the, uh, next item that I'm up for, um, would be, uh, the, the request for you guys to appropriate some funding from Virginia Department of Fire Programs. Um, they granted us, uh, a grant to complete some repairs to the training facility, the burn building. Um, and it, uh, we've gotten the work completed. Things are turned in and submitted. And they've awarded us, uh, the funds in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Make a motion, we accept the grant.
That's, that's what it has cost us?
To complete those repairs, yes, sir.
That's all grant, so.
Job, Cody.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion made a second in the discussion? All for the vote. Carry unanimous.
Thank you.
Cody, don't go anywhere.
Huh?
Can you make an update on the ambulances?
Yes, um, they are almost complete. I got a, a great, uh, production report a couple of days ago. They look like they're almost road-ready now, just a few final touches. Uh, it sounds like we're slated to travel down there to the factory the week of December the fourteenth, um, to do our final inspection. That'll be a busy week. It'll be our go-live date and also when we get to see those for the first time.
Okay.
I'd be happy to share that report with any of you guys that would like to see it.
Thank you.
Next board meeting will be the eve of the transition, final transition, so.
Paul, do you have a?
Yes, the, the next item is sometime back, the Board of Supervisors did appoint a rescue squad committee to work with the volunteer rescue squad regarding finances and to try to help the squad, uh, get more volunteers. And that committee is, uh, Vice Chairman Matthews, Supervisor Allen, the President, Vice President of the Volunteer Rescue Squad, Cody Davis, Mr. Wright, Carl Carter, and myself. Now, but now that the service has become the Buckingham County Emergency Services Department, I do believe we need to transition this committee appropriately. Uh, so I would recommend that the committee title be changed to the Emergency Services Committee. That this committee would oversee the Buckingham County Emergency Services as it relates to the operation of the emergency medical services. And, and just to make it clear, this does not oversee the volunteer fire departments. I state this because, of course, we've had some inquiries that, that possibly that that would be taking place. And we want to clear that we appreciate our volunteer fire departments and, and that's not in, in, in the courts right now. Presently, the fire department do have a quarterly meeting with Mr. Davis, Mr. Carter, and the four fire chiefs and, and someone from dispatch. So I think that's a good way that they're communicating with each other. And I think the new Emergency Services Committee should consist of only county officials and staff. Uh, if you wish to leave the same board members on the committee, it will be all of the rescue squad committees listed above, with the exception of representatives from the volunteer rescue squad. If this is to be a standing committee, the bylaws will need to be revised to add this committee to the list of standing committees that the board considers every year with the adoption of the bylaws. Bylaws can be revised any time of year at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors. Also, I would like for you to consider the authority of this committee. For example, the Public Utilities Committee and Solid Waste Committees have the authority to interview, hire, suspend, terminate employees of that, their departments. They also have the authority to set the salaries as long as the money is available in the budget. Any changes in total budget would have to be approved by the full board. So I ask at this time, if you do establish this committee, uh, and if you establish it as a setting committee also, do you want to extend the same authority to this committee? Or do you want this committee to have all actions, including recommendations of hiring and everything, to come back to the full Board of Supervisors?
I think they should.
Should what?
Should have it to do that.
Have the authority?
Have the authority to hire and fire.
It's, it's like you said, Ms. Carter, Mr. Chairman, it's very, it's, it's, it's mimics the authority of the water, I mean, of the, of the Utilities Committee, so, right?
I think it should have an authority.
So, so the, the. Actions that, that I would ask that you consider for the motions to accomplish these steps, if you do desire to do this, would be first to consider the establishment of an emergency service committee in place of the squad committee. Consider revising your bylaws. If you do do that, consider revising your bylaws to add this committee as a standing committee. You will not have to have a public hearing. Uh, three, consider, confirm the appointments to the committee, and four, consider authority of this committee.
Make a motion.
I, I think it would be good to have a motion for each item so that we have a, a clear record of.
Committee would remain, would, uh.
I made motion number one, I can't get.
Would remain the same, so.
It's one of the motions for each item should discuss.
Yes, you have to do, take a motion to change the bylaws, and you have to take a motion for committing. Need to take action, and a motion for the authority of the committee also.
Around this thing.
Give her a minute, we've got to type it in.
I've got it in, but the system is missing out.
I guess the first item would be for you to consider the establishment of an Emergency Services Committee.
All right, we have a motion to establish the Emergency Services Committee. I hit it about six times, I ain't coming.
Something else on your screen. Good off first.
There we go, there we go.
We messed up, I just got it in there.
Again, bear with us, this is our first night of a new system.
I'll second that, Mr. Chambers.
They messed up all night. I have motion made, second, that we. Establish the Emergency Services Committee in the discussion. All for the vote. Are unanimous.
Work when you get ready to work.
Second order would be, consider revising the bylaws to add this committee as a standing committee.
I'd move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we don't have to have a public hearing for that?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Motion made, we consider revising the bylaws to add this committee as a standing committee in the discussion. All for the vote. Are unanimous.
Third item would be to consider appointments to the committee or confirm the committee as presented, with the exception of the volunteer rescue squad members.
Need a motion for, consider to confirm the appointments to the committee.
Make a motion.
Motion made, Mr. Davis, second, by Mr. Miles, in the discussion.
And we're going to keep the same board members on it, right, Mr. Chairman? We keep the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Until January?
This committee would be considered every January when you consider your full bylaws.
Any other discussion? All for the vote.
I'm on the committee, I got it.
Only one abstained.
You just wanted to see a different color.
You hadn't seen that color before, had you?
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, Lynn Hill, Solid Waste manager. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Motion should be that this committee should have the full authority as Public Utilities and Solid Waste for hiring, interviewing, suspending, terminating, and adjusting the salaries.
Make a motion.
I heard the motion.
That's my motion.
That motion made, the second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? All for the vote. Motion carried unanimous.
I'd like to just take a moment to thank those on this squad committee, it's been a long time you've been working on this and also working with Kerry Flip and the President of the Squad. We've had a lot of issues to overcome, and you've all worked hard and worked well together, and we appreciate what the volunteer rescue squad has tried to do with this.
It has been challenging, I know.
It has been.
The next thing is, Lynn Hill's Hollow Waste manager, consider closing of waste sites for Christmas.
Notice that Mr. Hill's not here, but he is proposing, I don't know if he found out if the landfill is closed both days, but he's.
Did he find out for sure if it was going to be closed the twenty-fourth?
Both too, but. We think it's just Christmas Day.
We talked about it, you know, he sent emails out to me, because I'm on solid waste, and what he said was.
Wasn't sure about the twenty-fourth.
If the twenty-fifth, he knows that it's going to be closed Christmas Day, so we would close just the Dillon site Christmas Day, because right now it's an unrenovated site. That way, no employees had to come out and unlock it, it would be closed, all others are gated sites, people can get in them with the proper decal. If for some reason, the landfill is closed the twenty-fourth as well, we have no choice but to close the sites, all sites, because we wouldn't have a place to put the garbage. And currently, we empty the sites daily, and if they're closed Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, there's no way to empty the sites, the stuff would be running.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, so.
And I think what we ran into last year was we just didn't give notice to people, and people would come with their trucks loaded with trash, so I would further say that we could send out the telephone message, the red alert message, to everyone to let them know the Dillon site will be closed, but the other sites will be.
Currently, unless the landfill is closed, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Maybe get it on the website too, Ms. Carter?
So, if it's, if the landfill is closed Christmas Eve.
And Christmas Day, then we have to close the sites.
Both days.
Christmas Day.
We have to close, from what Lynn told me, we would have to close the sites both days. Well, for one day.
The Dillon.
For one day, because, yeah, Christmas Day, they would all have to be closed, because we would empty them Christmas Eve.
Trucks would be full.
Yeah, and then the trucks are full, there's no place to put it.
So, they, all of them will be closed Christmas Eve, possibly.
Possibly Christmas Day, yeah.
I think he, I think he said the twenty-fourth, but he didn't let me know for sure.
Yeah, I'll shoot him an email as well tomorrow and have him nail it down, and ask him the scenario of, what's the latest we can empty them, can we empty the trucks the twenty-third?
Late twenty-third.
Yeah, late twenty-third, and then we would empty the site the twenty-fourth, then we would only have to close for possibly one day.
That's right.
Christmas Days, I like.
No, I mean, I won't know anything until I talk to Lynn.
Just check with Lynn, and it's what we thought, Christmas Day is the only day it will be closed.
Right.
So, they can do early morning pickups on Christmas Eve, take it to the landfill, then be home with their family on Christmas Eve night, and home with their families on Sunday, on Christmas Day.
On Christmas Day.
It's Sunday, right?
I think we just have to leave that discretion up to Mr. Hill.
Saturday, isn't it?
That's it.
I don't know.
We're hiding from, paying for. Next thing, consider application through the Commonwealth Regional Council, fast track broadband funding to partner with NBC.
Yes, this is, certainly was a fast track funding thing, and something that we were notified on to do on a fast track, so it's. We will turn this in through the CRC and get what we can get out of it, it's, we don't know yet, but this is also some more money that's available because of the pandemic, so we want to try to apply with the CRC and see what comes up with the region.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we approve the application as presented. Looks like it's going to improve access to about six hundred homes and sixty-nine businesses, which is excellent, if that goes to his estimated.
I think. I think that that's, there's not time to do this, I think this is to try to assist with that, but as we're finding out with the CARES money, because we've had this question a lot, and some of the COVID grant money, there's just not time, I mean, when you get, you get a notice in October that you could get some money for broadband, but it's got to be built out by the end of December, it just isn't, and I've made a request, many of us have made a request for an extension. You could possibly have a contract and not pay out till after that date, but that contract has to be, the delay has to be at no fault of the local government, and you really couldn't even have a design by that time. So, this is, this will be, whatever they can do for us to help us. I don't think it's going to even be a lot of money, but whatever they can do to help us.
And it's ten percent, right, Becky?
Yeah, yeah, that we would get ten percent of the, of the total, it'll be through all the six counties, maybe seven now that Cumberland is.
Yeah, it'll be through the CRC district.
Yeah, yeah, whole district.
And I think the CRC has worked really hard on getting all this information to county staff as well.
And such a quick notice, yes.
Sure, and they ought to be committed, so.
Motion seconded, we consider the applications. Commonwealth Regional Council, fast track broadband, in the discussion. All for the vote. Are unanimous. Other board matters? I've got one, Mr. Chairman, I asked Ms. Carter this question, wouldn't elaborate committee meet again?
Elaborate committee meeting has been meeting every other Thursday, which would be next Thursday.
Next Thursday, okay, that's something we'll discuss with elaborate, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, regarding anti-litter, I distributed a copy of our most recent report from the meeting we had on everyone's desk, and you know, y'all can get with me if you have any questions, or Lynn Hill who was there, but we do have someone who's interested, Liz Jones lives in District One, and I've talked to Supervisor Davis, and he's familiar with her, and I would offer a motion that we appoint Ms. Liz Jones to the anti-litter task force, representing District, District One, one.
Other board matters?
Take the vote for.
What?
All right, you gotta make your motion again.
Okay.
Motion made in second, Mr. Miles, a motion in the discussion. All for the vote.
Right, there you go.
Are it unanimous. The other board matters? County Attorney matters?
Chairman, members of the board, I have two matters that I'd like your direction on, the first matter deals with a request made from McGuire Woods. As you may or may not know, McGuire Woods has served as bond counsel for the county for a number of years, and we've had a good working relationship with them. I had a request from one of the managing partners of the firm, if they had been approached by Buckingham Land and Timber Company, asking them to represent them in regard to advising them concerning the onsite drilling by the company and on the land that it owns here in Buckingham County. They would be prohibited from doing that unless you consent to allowing them to do that, it's not uncommon with a firm the size of McGuire Woods, that there are so many various departments, the bond department is probably the most isolated one of all, to have other people doing that, but they can't do it without your permission. They're not seeking a general waiver, but what they're asking for is a limited consent, that if at any time in the future, really, they should become totally adversarial and we go to court, then they would not be adversarial, they would not represent a party in an adversary relationship in a court action against the county. What they want to do is appear administratively before hearings and otherwise and represent the Buckingham Land and Timber Company, but they can't do that without your consent, it's not customary, it's not customary to do that, but I don't have the authority, you are the client, and you're the one that has to give them permission after they have disclosed to you that information.
All right, y'all heard what he said? Make a motion to that effect, or?
I don't see a problem.
The motion would be, and I heard Ms. Carter say she doesn't see, I don't see a problem with either, I mean, they are advocates for their client, they have said we want it limited, if it comes down to ever going to court, we're not going to represent somebody in court against the county. So, if you agree with that, then I would ask that you make a motion to give McGuire Woods a, they call it a limited consent to represent Buckingham Land and Timber Company in regard to zoning requirements related to onsite drilling by that company.
That's my motion, as presented with the county.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, in the discussion. All for the vote.
Second item is, Mr. Davis reported to you on what's happening with the Buckingham County Rescue Squad. I have two items in regard to that, one of which you authorized the purchase of a remainder interest, we have not been able to make that happen yet through no fault of anybody, but the Prince Edward County Clerk's Office had to limit the number of people that could come into the clerk's office because of this pandemic. There are certain records in that clerk's office that I need to get and put on record in this clerk's office to complete the chain of title. I'm monitoring when I can get in there, so that'll happen, but that does not hold up anything in regard to the transition of the services and providing the services by the county, so I offer that to you as, just as an update in why that hadn't been completed. The other item, a little bit more delicate, we are engaged in discussion with the company who will do the billing to insurance companies and Medicare on behalf of the county. We are in the process of talking about a contract, we have gotten down to where there are an issue or two that I need your direction on. So, accordingly, and I know the hour is late and you've heard a lot of information, and I promise you a short discussion, to go into executive session under two point two dash thirty-seven one one, under eight twenty-nine, when the time comes, so we can talk about that matter. It deals with negotiation of a contract and the expenditure of public funds, so when the appropriate time comes, if you could do that, I'd appreciate it, if you choose not to do it, it really does bog things down and we might not be able to resolve some issues, so I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. County Administrator's report.
Yes, sir, the first item is a very nice thank you from the school board for the student hotspots, and then also a thank you from Teresa's Place for the CARES business grant, and they've expressed to you the appreciation and situation they were in prior to getting that grant, it's kept, been able to keep them going.
That was a real nice letter.
Absolutely, they're very gracious for what Business Friendly Board has done for them.
Comment from three other businesses, Cheryl White, Sherry Midkiff, and Bruce Donovan express their sincere gratitude and appreciation to the Board of Supervisors as well for making that happen.
The next item is cigarette tax workshop information update, Carl and I have started working on, because we don't know how to do a cigarette tax increase, and at budget time, we wanted to look at any aspect we could, to bring in more revenue instead of real estate tax and personal property tax. So, we started in with this work group through Virginia Association of Counties, so we're gathering information and trying to learn more about this, so that we'll know by budget time, how to make a recommendation to you all to see if you do want to do that. It does seem to be more complicated than we would ever think, so Virginia Association of Counties is really helping to educate us. The next item, I wanted to give you an update on the Gold Hill School, I don't have it on the agenda, we will close that out November the seventeenth, so as of November the seventeenth, the county will no longer own that building, and Mr. Christian is very eager to start the renovations to the building to get his business going, so we think that's great. Last thing is the Personnel Committee Recommendation Report that we provided you, and as always, if you agree with. And as always, if you agree with it, you do not have to take action. If you don't agree, I would ask you to go into closed session to discuss it.
Mr. Chairman. Just before we go into closed session, I want to thank my friends from St. Thomas. They want to learn more about the county government, so they want to come out tonight, and we're glad they come. And I hope you got a better understanding of how the county government operates. Hope you'll come back again. Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we go into an executive closed session under Section 2.2-3711, dot A, dot 29. Discussion of the Award of a Public Contract Involving the Expenditure of Public Funds, Including Interviews of Bidders or Offerers and Discussion of the Terms or Scope of Such Contract, Where Discussion in an Open Session Would Adversely Effect the Bargaining Position or Negotiating Strategy of the Public Body.
Motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, but we go into executive closed session? In discussion?
I would also like to add in there. Section 2.2-3711, dot A, dot 1. Discussions, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining, or Resignation of Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body, and Evaluation of Performance of Departments.
Heard the motion? Motion made in second, call for the vote. Animals, going into executive session. Everybody else have a leave.
Sorry, people. All right, people. Mr. Chairman, I move that we return to open session and certification that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only business matters related to the codes of which the executive meeting was convened was discussed or considered in the closed executive session.
I second Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. We return to regular session?
Yeah, he drinks it too.
In the discussion, call for the vote. Unanimous, we're back in session. All the business we got.
We need to reconvene next Monday.
Yes.
Recession.
Recession to reconvene.
Yeah, we need to recess and reconvene on the sixteenth.
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock. Recession.